All right, 7:00, December 6, 2022. Busires City Council, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Terry, would you lead us?
Sure. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Potter. Sherrick.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
Young.
Here.
May I have a motion and a second to go into executive session to consider collective bargaining strategy in union employment contract with the International Association of Firefighters Local 1120?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever and a second by Mr. Spiegel. McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
We are in executive session at 7:01.
Madam President, can I make a motion to come back from executive session?
Yes, you may. While I have a second. Roll call. Sherrick?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter? Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
We are out of executive session at... 8:06. 8:06. Thank you, 8:06. All right. Moving on, you have before you the council minutes for November 15. You see any additions or corrections?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Wireball. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granted permission for visitors to speak. We have scheduled Busires Tree City, USA Board Report.
That was a petition. Petitions and communications.
Okay, so we'll move that down. Anybody else want to come up and speak? Moving on, communications and petitions. Busires Tree City, USA Board Report.
Susan, do you have the email you're going to read?
Yep. In accordance with Busires Ordinance 6-2017, Busires Tree City, USA Board is delighted to submit the Busires Tree Program Guide for the Care and Maintenance of the Trees of 2022 to the Busires City Council. We also request that the Tree Program Guide be placed into the Public Lands and Buildings Committee and Health and Safety Committee to review the recommendations to the board.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to refer that to Health and Safety as well as... Lands and Public Lands and Buildings.
Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Standing committee reports, platting?
Nothing at this time.
Public lands and buildings? Health and safety?
No report.
Finance?
No report at this time.
Not BB.
Economic development?
I don't have any at this time.
Service?
No report this time.
Traffic commission?
Nothing.
All right. Anything to approve? The Congress City Officers, Mr. Research.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce, also Quant and Order, especially for the hard work in organizing the two signature Christmas kickoff events we had last week. Many businesses did a nice job decorating their buildings. And I'd like to give a special mention to FC Bank for sponsoring the ice skating rink, which was, I think, always a big hit. Busires High School Student Council members were here today. I think we had 24, 25 kids decorating. And it was pretty... It's fun to have the young kids here. Lots of good leaders and had some nice conversations with them. And on your way out, or if you are up and about downtown area, stop in City Hall to see their decorations. Used to be they would come every year. You know, this is the first year they've been here, a couple of years due to COVID, so it's great to have them back. So we thank them. Ms. Bostic is the American history teacher at the high school. She is their advisor. And had a nice talk with her. And Mary Ellen Myers is the elementary school art teacher. And they did a fantastic job decorating. Just a couple corrections there, Susan. Bostic does not have a K on the end. And instead of Mrs. Myers, just put Mary Ellen Myers there, or Ms. Myers, just for the record there, so. That's all I got. Short report tonight.
All right, are you going to take care of the safety service?
I will. I will just report. We got a... Starting off with a referral, county waterline projects to service and finance committees does not need to be on this week's schedule, but if we just get it in committee. We met with ODOT, our area supervisor, Bob Weaver, and some other fellows. They have a new fee that they will be charging starting at the beginning of their fiscal year, which is July 1, 2023. And that'll be for areas that are, like, north Sandusky Avenue, that's actually out that they're in the city limits, one side is actually city limits, and a couple other areas in town. There's one place in the bypass that they're plowing, mowing, salting. And they have a new fee coming in that's... I think it's going to cost us about $10,000 to $15,000 a year. So we will get that in the budget next year at this time, just to give you a heads up on it. Traffic light project, we had the bid opening Thursday, December 1, for our traffic light project, and all three bids were within $25,000 of each other. That was... That's the one on Hopley and East Street. It's going to be a fairly large project. We have a Board of Control meeting next Wednesday? I'm sorry. We plan to award the 2022... That's tomorrow, excuse me. 7:00 right here in council chambers, 2:00 PM. That's when we will award the project. You had a funny look, right?
You said 7:00.
I'm like, you said 7:00?
No, December 7 at 2:00. 2:00, yeah. Yeah. All right. It's definitely not going to be 7:00. Nevada Waterline Project, big day on Thursday, December 8. I think we've talked about that more than once. That's at 2:00 PM right here in council chambers. That's going to be the bid opening. Columbia Gas is in town. You may see some yellow flags in certain parts of town because they are doing some line work, some valve replacement work, too. Asme negotiations are... Have been ongoing, and we were very close to an agreement there, which we should have an announcement on that here by the next council meeting. Holiday garbage pickup is going to be on our website, Facebook page, as well as our monthly newsletter. We had a civil service test Sunday, and we had 26 people took the test, which is the most in a long time. So we had two tests. We had a general labor and water treatment plant. Some of them actually took both tests, so. And there were also folks here for the police and dispatcher testing, too. And finally, Mansfield Street Riverbank, the manhole work that we're going to be doing there came in under $50,000, which is good news, so we will be able to save our advertising costs for this project, which has been running about $375 for projects, so. There we go. That's all for the Safety Service Director's report.
I have a question from who's... We had a couple months ago, the fiber optic guy in town.
Yeah.
What is the status of that operator?
Spring, right, John?
Yeah, we haven't heard anything from them. They originally wanted to begin in November, but they're still working in Cheltenham.
Okay.
The last hire.
Yeah, I think we're next on the list, then.
Where?
Chris Myers?
Who's the company doing the work on the Lane Street Bridge right now?
That's Crawford Construction, yeah.
Are they about done with that?
They're done with one side. They just started the other one.
So last week I went down there, and it was very problematic. I called Jeff Dunn directly and said, "We need a lot more signage." He said somebody actually stole the signage, or he's trying to get some back out. I received a call then again about three days later from somebody else with the exact same problem. Can we...
What's the problem?
There's no road, both sides. That's a curve in the hill.
Nothing, yeah.
And you got down the one lane. By the time you get down there, if you're in your proper lane, there's people in your lane coming right at you.
Okay.
Can we also, though, not only look at getting that, but make sure that that's part of our future contracts and bids, is if you're... If we're hiring a company, maybe make them provide their own signage?
Okay.
Yeah, we definitely have a safety issue.
Yeah, I drove through it, and I thought it was pretty bad. Bad, that's why I called Jeff right away.
Okay.
Drive a bus through.
Have you done that, Terry?
Anybody else have any questions for the mayor?
I'll take care of those things. Take care of that. I just wrote my note here.
All right. Potter?
I have nothing to report today.
Ms. Shipper?
You should have...
Hang on a second, I'm sorry. That's all right.
We did... There was a referral in the Service Director's report that we didn't do, so if I could...
Oh, I was going to go back and do it again. Okay.
I'll make a motion to send the county waterline to service and finance.
All right, can I have a second? I'm sorry. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sorry.
Motion carries. No, that's all right. Ms. Shipper, sorry about that.
That's all right. You should have received the cash position statement for November, the revenue tallies, and the income tax comparison. And I want to refer again, any adjustments needed for year-end, because we're still working on that as we're paying final pension payments and other things that are happening. So there's more adjustments that need to be made. And I'm running trial balances almost every day just to try to keep up with it all. So there will be more changes, and I hope that I will have them all in order for you Thursday for the next meeting.
You missed your green bar paper running that many?
Hmm?
You missed your green bar paper running that many?
No, I don't miss the green bar at all. But I'm going through an awful lot of paper right now. Luckily, I'm not having to make copies for anybody else on these. I can just get it done and move on. I am working. We went through the budget line by line. I'm trying to make sure I have all the new lines that we need for next year's budget and new funds before I actually transfer everything forward, because if I don't do that, it just causes issues later, and I have to back everything out and start over. So I would say we're probably going to have to look at the last week of the month to pass the budget for next year, so that it's in place for January 1. I will be closing out the year and having everything ready to roll into January 1 before I leave. So, you know, people will be able to get paid, and the mayor's going to be very busy because he's going to have all those purchase orders to sign for the beginning of the year, and all the checks to sign by hand. I got to get him hooked up with the bank until they get someone appointed to take my place.
I'm going to go with you.
So that's all I have tonight.
So do we need to schedule a council meeting for the end of the month to pass the budget?
Yeah, we'll know better probably Thursday, or the next council meeting, we'll definitely know when we can schedule it.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to refer the year-end adjustments to finance.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, you have treasurer's report?
No.
No?
She doesn't have the month-end stuff.
Right.
Because we don't have all statements yet.
All right. No report for... Either the Chiefs. So may I have a motion to accept city officers' reports as presented?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. Wireball. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This is a report regarding the reports to standing committee or special committees and city officers. Seeing none, moving on. Is that for 57?
It is 57. And 58.
Observe 58, correct.
The number's 58.
All right, I have a motion to suspend rule 111.11 to allow proposed ordinances 57-2022 and 58-2022 additional transfer to be presented to council without coming from committee to be voted as... To be voted on as is, as well as... Where's 58?
58 would be an ordinance acting on the fact-finder's report, and you'd actually have to vote to accept the order checked on that one. Each individual voter.
I can just say that.
Yep. Do I need to repeat that, or is your explanation sufficient?
My explanation would be sufficient if somebody made said motion in combination with what she said and what I said.
I'll make that motion?
To suspend the rules and proceed directly to ordinance 57 and 58 as presented.
I'll second that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
I got to do a roll call.
A roll call on that? Okay.
I thought the roll call was just on ordinance 58 needs a roll call. Or does that whole thing need a roll call?
You can vote to suspend the rules simply ayes or nays, so.
Yeah. So all those in favor of suspending the rule?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time?
Ordinance number 52-2022 amending and supplementing ordinance number 54-2021 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2022 by increasing the current balance in the personal services line item by 61,000 and in the transfers line item by $30,000, with both line items being within the fire department category within the program. One, securities of persons and property subparagraph within the general fund, further by decreasing the current balance in the materials and supplies line item by $1,500 and increasing the current balance in the contractual service line item by $1,500, with both line items being within the administration category, and decreasing the current balance in the personal services line item by $71,000 within the maintenance utility workers category and decreasing the current balance in the transfers line item by $20,000 within the general government category, with all line items and categories being within the program seven general government paragraph... Subparagraph within the general fund. And finally, by decreasing the current balance in the contractual services line item by $3,000 and increasing the current balance in the personal services line item by $3,000, with both line items being within the income tax category, within the income tax subparagraph within the income tax fund, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 53-2022 amending and supplementing ordinance 54-2021 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2022 by appropriating from unappropriated general funds the sum of $80,000 to the personal services line item within the police department category and $59,000 to the personal services line item within the fire department category, with all line items and categories being within the program one, security of persons and property subparagraph, further appropriating from unappropriated safety forces levy funds the sum of $65,000 to the personal services line item within the fire department category within the safety forces levy subparagraph, further appropriating from unappropriated local fiscal recovery 2021 funds the sum of $145,000 to the general government line item within the local fiscal recovery 2021 subparagraph. And finally, appropriating from unappropriated county sewer maintenance funds the sum of $32,000 to the capital outlay line item within the sewage replacement category within the county sewer maintenance subparagraph and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 54-2022 amending and supplementing ordinance for 54... Ordinance number 54-2021 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2022 by decreasing the current balances in the capital outlay line item by $373,000 within the streets construction, maintenance, and repair category within the street construction, maintenance, and repair subparagraph, further decreasing the current balances in the capital outlay line item by $40,000 within the general government category within the permanent improvement fund subparagraph, further decreasing the current balances in the capital outlay line item by $1,000 within the police department category within the police department donation subparagraph, further decreasing the current balances in the capital outlay line item by $500 within the fire department category within the fire department donation subparagraph, further decreasing the current balances in the personal services line item by $25,000 within the sewer and drains category within the sewage disposal subparagraph, and finally, decreasing the current balances in the personal services line item by $25,000 within the solid waste category within the solid waste subparagraph and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 55-2022 amending and supplementing ordinance 54-2021 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2022 by the creation of the category and object lines for the local fiscal recovery 2021 fund and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 56-2022, an ordinance authorizing the Busires Police Department and the Busires Fire Department to adopt the lateral transfer policy as specified in their union contracts and addendums thereto and declaring an emergency. 57-2022 amending and supplementing ordinance number 54-2021 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2022 by decreasing the current balance in the contractual services line item by $20,000 within the general government category and increasing the current balance in the contractual service line item by $20,000. $20,000 within the law director category, with all line items and categories being within the program seven general government subparagraph within the general fund and declaring an Ordinance number 58-2022, an ordinance acting on the fact-finder's report received in connection with the collective bargaining negotiations between the City of Busires and the International Association of Firefighters Local 1120 and the recommendations contained therein and declaring an emergency. And resolution number 246-2022, a resolution adopting and approving the new procurement policy for the City of Busires and declaring an emergency.
Something with ARPA? I'm sorry? That is what the last one is. Let's just leave this.
May I have a motion to accept this as a first reading?
Second.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. I just discovered when this was being read and I looked it over, I don't think I had checked this one previously. There's an error in ordinance 55-2022. It's my fault. It was done on my first version, and I discovered an error and sent the second version downstairs, but it was apparently missed. For the local fiscal recovery fund 2021, it won't affect the caption at all here. It's just the balances. That should be $138,381.15. And then the balance under general government should be $31,022, because this was previously appropriated for the tornado siren. And then other uses will be zero, because it's other uses that we're actually creating here.
What was the first number again?
The first number was $138,381.15.
Thank you.
And I apologize on that. I sent so many things down, I got a little confused.
So may I reiterate to accept as first reading with the correction?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public participation on any legislation read for the first time? Seeing none. Referring back to the originated committee, proposed ordinance 52-2022, refer back to finance. Proposed ordinance 53-2022, refer back to finance. Proposed ordinance 54-2022, refer back to finance. Proposed ordinance 55-2022, refer back to finance. Proposed ordinance 56-2022, refer back to health and safety. Proposed resolution 246-2022, refer back to finance. And as far as 57 and 58, I don't have to do anything, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Committee report on pending legislation, finance?
Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 52-2022, the transfers. Finance is also favorable to proposed ordinance 53-2022, the appropriations. Finance is also favorable to proposed ordinance 54-2022, the appropriation reductions. And finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 55-2022 with corrections of the creation of the object line. And finally, finance is favorable to proposed resolution 246-2022, the ARPA.
Health and safety?
Health and safety is favorable to proposed ordinance 56-2022, the lateral transfers.
And council as a whole? Ordinance number 52-2022, for the second, third readings of proposed ordinance 52-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball and a second by Mr. Myers. Wireball?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 52-2022?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers. McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Ordinance number 52-2022 is being adopted. Ordinance number 53-2022, for the second, third readings of proposed ordinance 53-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Spiegel. Young?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Potter? Sherrick?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 53-2022?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Wireball.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance number 53-2022 is duly adopted. Ordinance number 54-2022, for the second, third readings of proposed ordinance 54-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. McKeever.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 54-2022?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. Young.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Proposed, oh, I'm sorry, ordinance 54-2022 is duly adopted. Ordinance number 55-2022, for the second, third readings of proposed ordinance 55-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 55-2022?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. Myers.
Wireball?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Ordinance 55-2022 is duly adopted. Ordinance 56-2022, for the second, third readings of proposed ordinance 56-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Wireball. Mr. Myers?
Sherrick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Sorry, did that wrong.
That's right.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter? Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 56-2022?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Ordinance number 56-2022 is duly adopted. Ordinance number 57-2022, for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance 57-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. Spiegel.
Wireball?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 57-2022?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Young.
McKeever?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
What? Yeah. Proposed ordinance 58-2022, for the second, third readings of proposed ordinance 58-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. McKeever.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Are you voting to accept?
No, we're voting to suspend the rules.
Okay, that's right, nevermind, sorry, 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 sorry.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Do I hear?
Young?
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay. Okay. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 58-2022?
You'd accept or reject the proposed fact-finding?
Yes. I'll make a motion.
Okay, wait a minute, back up.
Are we accepting or rejecting with this motion?
I believe we state the word "accept" or "reject." Yes.
Okay, thank you.
In actual legislation that extended the state employee relationship.
Okay, so we hash mark vote, or is it an actual roll call vote?
Roll call vote.
Okay. So just go down the line.
Oh, okay. McKeever?
Do you accept or reject?
Reject.
Myers?
Accept.
Wireball?
Reject.
Potter?
Sherrick?
Accept.
Spiegel?
Reject.
Young?
Accept.
Okay. All right. Resolution 246-2022, for the second, third readings of proposed resolution 246-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. Myers.
Wireball?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Sorry, did that wrong. Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Sorry, did that wrong. Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 246-2022?